Yep.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I'm just gonna wait for a text from John again. Okay. Great. Hello and welcome everyone to the Deering Center Neighborhood Association District Four School Board and City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Amy Thompson. I'm a board member of the Deering Center Neighborhood Association, and I will be moderating tonight. The forum will have two parts. First will be the school board portion, and then that will be followed by the city council portion. Questions for the candidate forum was submitted prior to the forum. There will be no submitting of questions during the event. Thank you to those neighbors who submitted questions. Our timekeeper this evening is Allison Kenway. Thank you, Allison. She will give a yellow warning when there is 15 seconds left to answer, and then a red warning when time is finished. We will have two minutes for opening and closing statements, and one minute and 30 seconds per question. In the middle of our questions, we will have two bonus questions for which there is one minute each. This event is being viewed live on Zoom and on livestream on our Facebook page. A video of the event will be posted on our Facebook page and sent to our email list following tonight's event. Now, we would like to give the opportunity for the candidates to introduce themselves. Chris Vale and Aura Russell Better are running for District Four School Board. Thank you both for your efforts and dedication to serving our schools and our community. Aura, why don't you go first? Please introduce yourself. Say anything you would like the community to know. You have two minutes. And then, Chris, you will follow with two minutes also.
Great. Thank you so much, DCNA, for putting this on this evening, and for anyone out there that's able to join, and it sounds like you'll be able to listen to the recorded version as well, folks that weren't able to make it. So that's great. My name's Aura Russell Better, and I live in the East Deering neighborhood, so on Arcadia Street off Veranda. I've lived there for 15 years with my husband, and I have two daughters who both attend Presum Scott Elementary School. And we've been proud, Presum Scott community members, for, I'm going on seven years this year, this school year. My daughter, my older daughter will be finishing Presum Scott. She's in the fifth grade and started in pre-K. So I have just been, I've just loved being part of the Presum Scott community. It's been a big part of my family's life, and just a really, a really special place, and has, being part of that community has helped me kind of make connections with other school communities in Portland as well, and just really have found a strong sense of community in Portland schools. I got engaged with our family council, which is what we call our PTO at Presum Scott several years ago, and started following the school budget process year to year, and that kind of got me interested in what was going on on the district level. And then in 2016, I became a lead organizer with the four-school bond campaign, which resulted in passing a $64 million bond to renovate four of Presum Scott's rundown, I mean, excuse me, of Portland's rundown elementary schools, one of which is Presum Scott, and three of those schools are in District Four. So I sit on the Presum Scott Building Committee and was really excited. In the last two weeks, we had a meeting, and plans are underway coming, coming months to put our project out to bid, and next year the building is going to start to be renovated. So that's super exciting after years of hard work by a lot of people. And the LICEF project is underway, and look forward to hearing more about Longfellow and Reiki Schools getting renovated. So those are a big piece of work that I've been engaged with, and really find that that's one of the pieces of equity work that's been happening, having our buildings be more equitable across, across our district. Am I getting the time?
You're getting the time, Aura. Thank you so much.
Yes. So thank you so much. I look forward to the conversation.
Great. Thank you, Aura. And Chris?
Hi, everyone.
Two minutes to introduce yourself. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. My name is Chris Vale. I live at 1119 Washington Avenue here in Portland in District Four. I have a son that goes to LICEF, 10 years old. We've resided here at 1119 Washington Ave since my wife and I were married about 18 years ago. I was lucky enough to grow up on Peaks Island. I went to Peaks Island Elementary, then on to King Middle School, and graduated from Portland High School. I have been a member of the Portland Fire Department for over 21 years at this point. I have kind of focused my volunteerism around my son's efforts, whether it be summer programs or the activities he does with sports and just winter activities. So I, besides thanking the Deering Center Neighborhood Association, I want to thank Aura for all her efforts. Her resume is incredible with the efforts that she's done with PTOs and really assuring that our, our kids are safe, happy, healthy, and in good environments. So it's really great stuff, and I also want to thank her for running. Just, I, I find someone that's willing to step up and help children is always a good thing. I think the ideas of the mission statements and the code of ethics that the board has designed is really the core of what we, we need to work towards and follow and make, make good on what's been developed for years prior to us. But I just love the idea of people just wanting to get out and volunteer and do things that are the positive core of what our great little big city is here in Portland. A lot of what I'm trying to bring is bridging the gap from what I consider a kind of a blue collar Portland is the majority working class that has kids in these schools. I know, and it's, some of it's feels like an excuse to explain, but when I get home at the end of the working day, I, sometimes I don't have the energy to put into the PTOs and the board meetings and the sessions. So I just want to try and bridge that gap from the schools to District Four. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you both for those introductions. It's lovely to hear everything that you've done in the community. Now for our questions, and I will, when I see the time signal, I will simply say 15 seconds time complete, so that we're sure the communication is happening. The first question, Chris, if, yes, Chris?
Could I ask, I, I'm sorry.
I'm losing you.
Yellow and red card over there, but I kind of knew when you gave me the wave.
Sorry. Chris, you broke up. Could you repeat that, please? Losing you. Are you there now?
Yes, I was apologizing for running over. I didn't see the yellow and red card on the screen.
It's, I think I will, when I see it, I will signal, so that both you and Aura can see it.
Great.
Yes. Now we know. No problem. The first question, Chris, if you could answer the question first or a second, you will have 90 minutes for each question. Just because I don't have red and, oh, I might have red and yellow. Okay. I will just, I will just do the red and yellow, okay, when I get it from Allison. We will, you will have 90 seconds for each question.
Great.
Chris first or a second? What issues in Portland Public Schools will be the highest priority for you and why?
I still think it goes back to my introduction a little bit. It's bridging the communication gap. I think we have a lot of great things that go on in our, in our schools right now, in all our districts. It's the communication that we almost need to, I don't want to say force on people, but I think the more, the better. It really takes a lot of participation from the parent's side, when I would kind of hope to bridge the gap of where, like I said, the working parents, the caller in Portland, that at the end of the working day, you know, making it to that PTO meeting, or being part of a board, or attending board meetings, or even city council meetings, can kind of be exhausting, sort of busy with just the kid stuff alone, let alone the work things, lives. So even on the weekends, I, I prefer family time than these that, that might be proposed by schools, by volunteer stuff. So I think bridging those to the district parents, really the specific flyers that are going to the parents, that's reaching from A to B instead of clouded and in smaller groups. So really creating that two-way communication that we can, yeah, solidify.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Aura?
Thanks. I just wanted to go back and say thank you to Chris for being so gracious and recognizing me, and I failed to recognize you, Chris. So thank you also for putting yourself out there and running. So issues for me that are big ones, I think I just need to first acknowledge the pandemic and, and, you know, what, what teachers and staff are doing right now, which is just Herculean, really, and our, and families juggling and trying to figure out how to make things work with hybrid and remote learning. So I think just, first off, to say a priority is, that's going to be for the near future. We just don't know, right? So priorities for having good communication with our, our staff that are working their tails off, and with families to get their needs met as best as possible, using the CARES funding that's available, and just, so I think communication is a piece of that, but just saying that right now we're kind of in survival mode as a school district and as schools are across the country. So just kind of want to say that that's like kind of front and center right now. And, yeah, just, just knowing that things are not normal right now. I just want to acknowledge that.
15 seconds?
15 seconds. Okay. So, so equity is a huge one for me. So some of the big, the big pieces are the pre-K expansion program that's happening in the next few years, and continuing with building on the Portland Promise. Thanks.
Thank you, Aura. Great. And Aura, this question goes to you first, and Chris second. You've already touched on it. Portland Public Schools has done an enormous amount of work to deal with COVID. What are the things you are most pleased with? What are the things you are most concerned with?
So I'm going first on this one?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, great question. I think it said, what am I most pleased and what am I most concerned?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I was really, for, for my own, and I'm hearing this in other schools, but my own experience as a parent and seeing Presum Scott school staff just pull, pull outdoor learning together, like in the couple of weeks before school was really impressive to me. I was, I was concerned about how that was going to happen, to be honest, just with resources coming in the last minute for all the schools. But I've been really pleased to see how I've seen schools across our district really figuring out how to have outdoor learning, which is really exciting, I think, for even future beyond this pandemic, I hope. So I've been really happy to see just create lots of creative things happening for kids to be outside. Concerns, a lot of concerns about meeting all families' needs, which is, again, back to equity, like kids that don't have devices that they need, families that are working, right? We have so many families that I worry about how kids and families are, you know, not only the education piece, but just keeping their kids safe right now. So that's something you just have to continue on, you know, having as many plans for kids to have, you know, on the days at school, isn't in session, okay, programming for them, and just to continue making sure that we have options for all families and where they're at and their ability to be home with their kids. So, thank you.
And the question goes to you, Chris?
Great. Thank you. I, I think it, it's gonna sound clouded, because, because I'm gonna voice a concern and an applause at the same time. I think my applause is for getting this show off the ground is amazing. The, the multitude of moving parts of, even over the summer, to, to keep kids nourished, I think, was wonderful. And just the programs that we are, I can see it, as a school department, we are trying to get kids educated and healthy, and keep them on, on the path of success that we want all of our kids in Portland to go through. But therein lies the concern at the same time, I, I often feel like we need to hug a teacher, because they are going through so much emotionally, physically, every day to get this, this off the ground. And what are, what are we providing for them? Are we doing enough to educate them with every safety precaution that they need to be educated on? Are we offering enough supplies? I, I know the ground level, a lot of this work is being done, but what's the, you know, what's the vision moving forward? You know, there's a million cliches of, is this the new norm? Well, if this is the new norm, then, then some of the things we've done up to this point have been short-sighted. So it's, it's kind of embracing the, the boots on the ground that we have right now, but also what could we do more for them? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will go to you first, Chris, and then Aura second. Regarding addressing COVID, are there any changes or new policies that you would like to see?
I think first of all, and this is, this would be a bit of a research project to get off the ground, but part of the big concern with this virus is it's airborne. So what are we doing with air handling in all of our schools? You know, not just the four schools we're renovating, and, and are we even behind with the four that we just renovated? So I, I'm interested in the idea of air, air handling and how we can create clean air environments for our children and our teachers and our staff. This could be peace of mind that we take things out of the concern of, I, I think masks are going to be around for a while, but if we start to create healthier environments, just at the, the core level of where we're at in our classrooms and our schools, I, I think that's a wonderful place to start. Like I said, the four schools being a little bit maybe behind the change of the times already, and them being so new, it, it would take a Herculean effort to, to adopt this through all of our schools. But, but I'm just curious, so what we could do to provide more safety precautions that will be looking to the future, not just looking for today? The viruses and epidemics are going to be around for a while, and I'd, I'd like to see us get ahead of it where we're not chasing it next time and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And our other question goes to you.
Yeah, I, I definitely have some concerns about not having a system in our schools for testing. And I'm not a public health expert, so I would defer to those in our community that know how best to do, to have that process. But, you know, as the winter comes, and we are going to be indoor, you know, the outdoor learning is going to be much more limited. I'm definitely concerned, and I think it was a good choice to stay two days, because I don't think the space and, you know, being able to do distancing our classroom. I know at Presum Scott anyway, that we have modular buildings, and the space to be able to do that doesn't seem likely to be, to be safe. So, but I, I have concerns about feeling like test, testing our staff and, and students should be a part of our plan. And also, yeah, I agree with Chris about the ventilation, especially in the older buildings. That's something that I think, yeah, has been put off. And now we're in a situation where it's really not okay, that we don't have, you know, basic modern standards. So I think, and then just lastly, the issue about, you know, they're probably needing to be more remote learning, and we can continue to make sure we have the resources that all of our kids and families need. That right now, I know a lot of families don't have the technology and ability to, to do the learning from home. So I have concerns about that. Thanks.
Thank you. The fourth, fourth question, Aura will go to you first, and Chris second. "The opportunity gap determined by arbitrary circumstances in which people are born, such as their race, ethnicity, zip code, and socioeconomic status determine, determines opportunities in life. This may be the greatest challenge facing Portland Public Schools students. How do you see the opportunity gap affecting the Portland Public School population, and what specific policies do you support to address it?"
Thank you. Great and big question. So I mentioned earlier, but I do think one big piece that Portland Schools in the last year has really been moving forward on, and I support wholeheartedly, is expanding our pre-K program. We know that starting kids in school at age four has huge, huge benefits to their lifelong learning. My daughter was in the first pre-K class at Presum Scott in a tiny space, and like, we made it work. But, you know, since then, we now have two classes, and many more children can come to school. They, they get their meals, they get connected with the teacher and relationship with the family. And so that is a huge piece, that when that is available across our district, that is going to bring a lot of kids who do have a lot of those, as, as the question noted, barriers that are no choice of their own, the color of their skin, where they were born, their economic status, and give kids a better footing to start their education on the same level as all their peers, that may be of middle or higher income. And I'm probably getting out of time, but, so that, that is a big one.
15 seconds. I'm sorry, we lost you. If there's anything you can do for your internet connection, we lost the last bit of your statement.
Okay. Did you, so you heard, you heard about the pre-K, but not the other piece? But I'm going over my time. Do you want me to just quickly?
Let's move on, Aura.
Okay.
Sorry. Thank you. All right. Chris, to you.
I, I think the, the core of what I looked for, I, I understand the, it's been a readily asked question during the past few weeks from a lot of outlets about race and ethnicity and any gaps that we have in our schools. I, I think the wonderful thing, or the, the first thing that comes to my mind is, in the city of Portland, and I look at my son's eyes, it's the, the kids that hold our future. I, I think the wonder that they have, my son has friends from every dynamic and every culture. I, which is a vast change from in the 70s and 80s when I went to school. I look at what Portland Schools do right now with languages, and the, the dynamics that we embrace from every part of the world.
We've lost you, Chris. Not sure if there's anything you can do.
But I think it still goes back to our mission statement, our core, the core values that are in, and has to follow. Am I back?
You're back.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I was just appreciating what the Portland School System has done. I think we have wonderful programs. Our kids have such a brilliant vision towards things.
Chris, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're going to move on because we're losing you.
Some.
All right. I'm going to go on to the next question.
City, we've done so much with language and bridging gaps with ethnicity. It's really wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Chris, this question actually goes first to you. We'll hope that your internet is there. And Aura, second, if elected, what will you support and do to address systemic racism?
I think it plays off of the last question a little bit, and some of my answer. I, I think the, looking to the beauty and the innocence of the kids is the core of what we need to look to our future. To pull any one part out of our mission statement as a school board, or even the core principles, I think is irresponsible not to take those as a whole. I, I think the school board for a lot of years has built up great vision to encompass every ethnicity we have. My fear sometimes is that we try to get on a national conversation, when we need to stay focused to what is most important or most compromised in our own city. I think the school board has done a great deal of work to set foundation with all the vision, and the Portland Promise. There's so much hope and great things that we've already built up. But to jump onto national conversations and national platforms, when I don't believe we are the same dynamic of a Baltimore and Chicago and New Orleans, we, we, I think we're a great little city that has a lot of positive upside to it. And I look to the brilliance and the, the innocence and the joy of the kids to, to give us the feedback of what, what we should do for the future. Great. Yes. I, I just hate to see us get part of a national platform, when we need to stay focused in our own city.
Great. Thank you, Chris. And the question goes to you, Aura?
Well, I would have to respectfully, strongly disagree with what Chris just said. And the reason is because I also enjoy, I agree with you, Chris, in what you said about the diversity of our community. And I know I didn't have that growing up in Gloucester, Maine at all. So I value that higher, and it sounds like you do too. But I think that it's a mistake for us to, to champion it and show that as a gem of our community, which I think it is, but also not with that, have a deep understanding that with that becomes a responsibility of really looking at things with the lens of systemic racism, and how that affects how those students, especially, you know, students coming here from other countries and not speaking English. There, there are a lot of barriers to kids getting the education that they need. And I'll just share, I've heard a lot of stories in hiring practices, people trying to get jobs in Portland Schools, and having really concerning experiences with how they were treated and not hired in Portland Schools. So I know a lot of those stories I hold of students telling me, we have wonderful teachers, don't get me wrong, but experiences of teachers saying really racist comments to these students about how they weren't going to get anywhere in school. I mean, they're, they're just a multitude I mean, they're they're just a multitude of those stories that we might not always know unless we kind of ask and are open to hearing those. So I guess what I would say is just being open to having continued conversations with our students and staff about expectations, looking at our curriculum and how kids learn about the history in our country of slavery, Native Americans, they're just pieces that we don't have, and I think those are
Time. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Aura. Okay, we are in our bonus questions section. These questions, you will have one minute for each, sixty seconds, Chris first, Aura second. What is a favorite book, film, or TV show of yours? Tell us a little bit about it and why it's meaningful to you.
So am I going first?
No, it's Chris. Are you there, Chris?
Am I? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I guess I'll keep it simple. I was a big fan of Seinfeld in the nineties. It was, it hit every bit of humor in our country, taught us to kind of not take everything so seriously, especially in New York City where everything is a little bit hotter of a topic. I think just the sense of humor that went around with the four characters touched a lot of different hot buttons in society, social topics, environmental topics, political topics, just fun, good-hearted, and also just, yeah, well-written and seemed to have a good good story beginning to end, even if you didn't like the last episode. But yeah, I just stick with Seinfeld.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I haven't watched Seinfeld in forever. I have to introduce my tween to Seinfeld. So I have been enjoying watching Parks and Rec with my tween, and it's been really a good, just to not me take myself too seriously running for office. That was Leslie, no character. She's pretty hilarious, but very smart and committed, but it just a good laugh to, yeah, and running for office just to not take myself too seriously. So, thanks.
Thank you. The next bonus question, Aura, if you could answer that first, and Chris second. What is a favorite place to take a walk in or go to around Portland?
Oh, so many places. Let's see, well, I should try to highlight my East Dyer neighborhood. I was gonna say a couple other places, but I will, I will share a place in East Dyer neighborhood, which is down near Martin's Point. There's kind of like a little secret beach. So going down Veranda Street to Martin's Point, so walking on Route one to, it's just, we're so lucky. We have all these beautiful spots right on the water. So that's kind of a a sweet place in my neighborhood or close to my neighborhood.
Great. And Chris?
Well, I I have to go with my heart, and I'm not going to win any votes in District Four, but growing up on Peaks Island, I didn't appreciate as much when I was a kid of how beautiful my neighborhood was. So to go back there now with a ten-year-old son and walk those streets that I can appreciate now with just love and beauty and family and friends that still welcome us with open arms quite regularly. It's still what I consider my hometown in my hometown. So yes, just the beaches, the streets, the back shore. It, there's a spot of it that doesn't feel like home to me, so I'd have to say just Peaks Island. Whole neighborhood, really.
Great. Okay, thank you both. We're returning to regular questions. These will be ninety seconds again. Chris, the first question, Aura to you, second. If the city council requires the school board to decrease its budget, what would be your approach to prioritizing the allocation of funds? We've lost you again, Chris.
Classroom. I've I've always
You're back.
Okay. I've always been a fan of getting the money to the classroom. I'm often concerned I I always refer to as a little big city. Are we top-heavy? How is our administration? I think a full review of how is in the administration concerns me and would be a a budgetary concern to review. Like I said, I I don't know if the support and the funding is there enough for our teachers as it is. So to compromise or I know we're up for tough economic times with COVID and all of our it's really difficult right now. So this is, this is a question that I'm sure is in the very first inning of of the next school board budgetary conversation. So it's just tighten our belt and and keep the fun and and how we can function. Thank you. Well, yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Good. All right, to you, Aura.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat the question?
Yes. If the city council requires the school board to decrease its budget, what would your approach to prioritizing the allocation of funds be?
Okay, thank you. You know, I really feel like we are pretty bare bones, to be honest. I'm not saying that there's nowhere that I could prioritize, but I don't think there is a ton of administrative capacity that that should be cut. Honestly, I think I think that our administrators work really, really hard and do a lot of good work for our district. So I feel like while that would be preferable to teaching positions, I I think that a priority really has to be in looking at our state funding formula. I understand, I mean, during COVID times, everything's going to be a tough sell because our economy is really struggling and probably will continue to be for some time. But I think that state funding formula, I'm working with our state delegation and our city to say that the state and frankly, the federal government needs to give more money to our schools. So we're not in this situation year after year. So I guess I can't say a specific area that I would push for for cuts, but yes, certainly as far away from staff positions as possible and prioritizing working with our state delegation. Thanks.
Thank you, Aura. Our next question will go to you, Aura first, Chris second. The superintendent this year proposed reconfiguring our elementary schools. It would save money by reducing the number of teachers and increasing class sizes. This savings would be used to support initiatives for under-resourced students. It would also better integrate some schools, but would end a number of neighborhood schools as we now know them and increase student blessing. Though the public was overwhelmingly against this proposal in the spring, the superintendent has said he will reintroduce it. What are your thoughts about this?
Oh, I'm so glad to talk about this one. I I believe that this is an inevitability to have this conversation again already before COVID. So I know that this is something that is not a pleasant conversation for most of us to have. And I've been a neighborhood school advocate for years, so it's very painful to to hear and and think about this as an option. And honestly, I'm not happy at all, but it's maybe on the table. And also, these these four building projects honestly have been incorrect about all of them, but I know Presum Scott is to be a pre-K to five school. Been designed to be something that then we're talking about changing. But I will say that I'm open to conversations about it. I just, my focus is to really have as much community input as possible because these are huge, you know, families live in these communities for the schools as they are right now. I mean, our pre-K to five school, you know, for my child who's been there the whole time, has had huge benefits. And so I think just really having lots of robust opportunity for community input. And I and I I think it's it's not a a happy proposal for for most people, but I think it's something we are gonna, we are gonna be having to look at. So that's what I think. Thanks.
Thank you, Aura. Chris?
Yes, I, again, I agree totally with Aura about the the neighborhood feel. Growing up at a small school in a small neighborhood and even being a proud graduate of Portland High, it's irresponsible not to reexamine our city structure. We're, it's not nineteen seventy-five anymore, and we don't have the bubbling population in schools we used to have. I I wish we did. I love tradition. I would promote Norman Rockwell all day until I became a city of Portland property taxpayer. There's some responsibility and some some real conversations we have to have with where our economic responsibilities lie. I think the examination of every school in the city needs to be looked at, and that's not saying that we cut things in half and consolidate and move towards the industrialization of our school system. But it's the idea just responsibly that we don't have the, we don't have the population in the public schools that we used to have. Some of that comes from the, our neighborhoods are breaking down and families are moving out of town and can't afford to live in town. But all this is the same conversation, our economic responsibility and how we can look at doing things better. That needs to be constant, just how how can we do better and how can we do better to our Portland taxpayers? Thank you.
Great, thank you, Chris. This is our last question. Chris, it goes to you first. What do you think are some of the greatest strengths of Portland Public Schools and why?
I think it goes back a couple of questions ago now. I I think our diversity is incredible. And and even to the point of what we referred to when I was a child in school, the diversity and even the languages we promote now and the the welcome mat that I feel like we have to the whole world. But also, I I think it's just the inclusion and the involvement of kids. I remember there was a lot of kids pushed through the school system in the seventies and eighties. I I don't see that anymore. I I see kids being embraced and taken care of and the core values that I see. Happy, healthy, fed, educated, a lot of the core dynamics that are in the mission that are in the vision from the Portland school boards already built up. I see these things not being secondary anymore. To the point with fighting Augusta, I hope we can win those battles, but I think we need to start right here in Portland just embracing the the wonderful community we have. We are Maine's biggest city, but in relative small, relatively small in the the New England dynamic. So I love our diversity. I love the way we operate, and I love that we are not one of the problem cities around this country, being overwhelmed with any one dynamic. Thank you.
Thank you. Aura, to you.
So many things to share. So I think, I do think the neighborhood school piece that we offer in Portland, that if you look at our surrounding communities, just don't have that, right? Like we have, look at all these really unique school communities we have, like Presum Scott's an expeditionary learning school, King and Pasco Bay, just different, different programming. And, you know, just that, you know, if you live in the neighborhood, you are going to have some unique offerings in your community school, but also families choose to live in certain neighborhoods to go to school. So I think we have, you know, just really a plethora of options and specialties. I just think staff that I so many staff members that I, you know, both classroom teachers, ed techs, custodians, just people across the board that just care so much about students and want to lift them up. And I just see, I just see really strong commitment from staff in our schools and that I always feel really proud about. I think as a district, the the administration and down to all the staff, I feel like there just really is a commitment about the equity piece that is messy. We don't always know the answers to how to, you know, try things, but the stuff continues to be an issue. But I just think there's a lot of creativity and wanting to do better, and I I see that day after day. And that's why I want to be a part of it. I'm really, I'm really proud to be, to have an opportunity to be a larger part of the school community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Aura. We're at the end, and each, thank you very much for your responses. They're very much appreciated. We will end the school board portion of the forum with each candidate having two minutes for closing remarks. Chris first and Aura second.
Again, just to, just to respond to earlier stuff. I'm, I'm excited that Aura's running. I'm excited that we have these conversations. Appreciate the opportunity. Too often, we don't be lesser things on the ballot when actually this is one of the more important. Our children, you know, like I said, they're the resource for all the hope we have in this city. So the the opportunity to educate the neighborhoods and do so through some live feeds during the COVID, this is a a great opportunity to educate people, like I've been saying, when they're home. They don't have to go to board meetings. This helps people make some educated decisions come what I've been talking about the whole time, people are, and keep them involved, whether they have the time to show up and be at things. I know I'm there for my son all the time, but the more information that's fed to me, the more I I'm educated as well. And I I hope to have the opportunity for District Four to to be a voice and a responsible bridge between what's somebody's living room and City Hall, so to speak. So thank everybody for the opportunity and the the time this evening, and congratulations, Aura, for for stepping up as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And to you, Aura.
Yeah, I think this whole Zoom forum has had its challenges for sure, but I'm I'm happy how Chris framed that because I do think it it's really true. And in the challenges we've had in this pandemic, there have also been some more creative ways, right, to engage more people, and I hope that we're able to continue with some of these. And maybe other, other ways to have forums and more community conversations. And I do think, and what Chris mentioned, and I didn't talk about as much tonight, but the the challenges with having everybody at the table and making these big decisions, say, just about reconfiguring schools or about you know, other, other big challenges we face as a school community. I think having more and more opportunities that do fit around families' busy, busy schedules to engage are really important. Like I would hope that we could have smaller ways in the school communities to have families be able to discuss issues and then maybe within neighborhoods and then on a larger district level. So I'm, yeah, I look forward to to doing more thinking about that. And I am excited about a lot of the equity work that the district is doing. I really think each each school community needs to be engaged in making those decisions about what are the priorities, whether it is the pre-K expansion program, which is moving forward, or looking at our curriculum and how do we have an anti-racist lens and really teach, teach our kids from an early age about their history so that they can make choices and be engaged civically as they get older and become young adults. As we have some young people running for office this year, it's really exciting. I don't know that I would have already do at that at the young ages that some people are running. So I hope that young people can see opportunities in our communities to become actively engaged and need the the information and and support to do that with with great, great curriculum engagement. So thank you, Chris, and thank you, DCNA. Appreciate the time tonight.
Thank you both, Aura and Chris, so much for being here. We wish you the best on the campaign trail. We will transition now to the District Four City Council portion of tonight's forum. Thank you very much. Hello, Andrew.
Hi, happy Monday.
Thank you.
I hope my wifi doesn't cut out.
Well, we're all doing our best with the wifi.
Yeah, I know. We are, we are zoomed out.
Yeah. Hello, Rosemary. Rose, welcome. Welcome, Rose.
Thank you.
We will now begin the City Council portion of our forum. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Our candidates are Andrew Zarro and Rose Mahoney. We will follow the same format as the school board portion. Questions for the candidates were submitted prior to the forum. There will be no submitting of questions during the event. Our timekeeper will give a yellow warning signal when there's 15 seconds left to answer and then a red warning when time is up. We will have two minute opening and closing statements. One minute and 30 seconds for policy questions and one minute for the bonus questions in the middle. Thank you both very much for being here this evening. Candidates, if you could introduce yourselves, anything you would like to share? You will have two minutes each. Rose, if you could go first and Andrew second.
All right. So I'm Rose Mahoney. I am, I'm a Portlander. I grew up here, grew up in the Deering Highlands, so a little outside of District Four. And I've lived in Portland after wandering off as, as an adult, a young adult came back in 1984 and I've lived here ever since. The reason, you know, I have a lot of reasons that I would like to run for City Council. And you know, my first reason is it's really sort of a, you know, a service of gratitude to the city that I love. You know, it's a service of gratitude to my home. I also happen to think that I possess the skills and the experience necessary to ably represent District Four on the City Council and am committed to doing that. And you know, there's a lot of challenges that are, you know, more challenges were heaped on with the beginning of COVID-19. But there are several challenges prior to that, that are, that are facing our city. And it's going to take, you know, it's going to take some hard decisions. It's going to take some, you know, difficult conversations. And it's going to take a lot of work, you know, with the, with these, at the state level, among councils ourselves in our own communities to really come up with what is meaningful and important to all of us. And sometimes make some difficult decisions in terms of where we allocate our resources and how we generate those in the first place. You know, I'm, I thank you very much for this opportunity to participate in this forum this evening. These are exciting. They're a little, a little unnerving, particularly with no questions up front. It's hard to study. So thank you very much and thank you, Andrew, for being here also. I look forward to a lively and informative evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Rose. And the question, the introduction now is your turn.
Thank you. Thank you, DCNA. Thank you, Rose. This, a throwback to what Aura was saying. This is Parks and Recreation and it's honestly what's getting me through the whole thing. Hi, everyone. My name is Andrew Zarro. I am running for Portland City Council, District Four. You already knew that. I live in Back Cove with my husband TJ and our two dogs, Dream and Albus, and our chickens. I own Little Woodbirds, which is a small coffee shop that was in the heart of Woodbirds Corner, right on the edge of District Four. But we had to move to, but we were downtown in, in the bottom of Montreal right now. So before I was a small business owner, I worked in the nonprofit sector for a while, doing a lot of advocacy work. I worked for the Smart Growth Organization here in Maine and got to work all throughout the state, talking to people in their communities about what matters most to them. I'm from Vermont originally and Maine and Vermont are very similar places. Before I did that, I was working as a Main Street Director, again, working with small businesses, a passion of mine. And then before that, I was doing a lot of criminal justice reform and juvenile justice reform. A big thing that makes me tick is my community. I'm very involved as a community organizer. I care deeply for my neighbors. It's just kind of ingrained in my blood, my DNA. And I think that's inherently very northern New England, you know, checking on your neighbor, making sure that, you know, everyone has a seat at the table and you're lifting each other up. I agree with Rose 100% that our city is facing some pretty tough stuff right now. And it's not just because of COVID. In fact, I do think that COVID unearthed what was already there with affordability, housing, access to resources, our local economy being squeezed out more and more every day. So I'm excited to be here and have this conversation with you and, and just, yeah, hear what matters most to you. So thanks for having us.
Thank you. Thank you both. Our first question, which you have 90 seconds to answer. Andrew, if you could answer first, Rose second. How do you think the city has performed in addressing COVID? Are there any new policies or things you would like to see done differently?
Big question. I mean, overall, right, this is unlike anything we've ever seen. And you do the best you can. That being said, I think there are a lot of missed opportunities. A couple of examples, the closest that are near and dear to me are as a small business in a city that is, you know, over 53% of, of folks are employed by small businesses. And our city's identity is wrapped up in the vitality of our local economy. We could be doing more and we could have done more earlier. First thing that comes to mind is I know the state of Vermont took CARES Act money and allocated little $30 gift cards to people who lived in the state that could only be spent on local businesses. It's not going to, it's not going to save every shop, but it's an attempt at trying something new and different. I think, you know, those first couple of months that hopefully will stay in the rearview mirror. We don't, that, that was a moment of pause for the entire city and we really were seeking leadership and we were seeking compassion. You know, I feel like moving forward, especially as we go into fall and winter, we are going to be seeking that leadership once again. Hoping that people are hearing us, especially for those in the unhoused community who are not able to distance. Proximity is more of an issue. I, I just, I want to see our council and our elected officials at the state level, all the way up in Augusta, showing up for the constituents and saying, I see you, I hear you, and this is what we're going to do to keep you safe.
Thank you, Andrew. Rose?
What was Portland, how was Portland's response to COVID-19? Is that the question?
Yes. And what new policy or things would you like to see done differently?
So, um, I mean, I felt, I felt like, you know, watching from the outside now, I, I work for the Maine Education Association. So I was very wrapped up in dealing with the schools that I work with and, and working with those personnel while I was, when COVID was happening. But you know, I remember, you know, it felt like Portland was trying to get ahead of the state or be first and have the state follow suit. And then, so I, I saw a lot of unnecessary work because the city would get out and, and make a policy and then the state would offer something different and then, then the city would have to revert. So it was just, it felt like it was inefficient from the outside. You know, I think we also met some really big challenges early on with being probably the first community in Maine that experienced community spread. So then the response in that respect was very good and we had some opportunities to, you know, take a look at what the priorities are. You know, Andrew mentioned the, you know, folks who, who are homeless in Portland. And like I thought that the opening of the Sullivan Gymnasium was a fantastic thing. And I think it was really successful for the folks who benefited from that. You know, in terms of trying to stop curbside businesses for small businesses in Portland, I thought that was not a good idea. But I know that the city retracted that very quickly and that's it.
Thank you, Rose. Our next question, Rose, to you first and then Andrew. Homelessness during COVID has gotten even worse with growing numbers and lack of safe places to go during the day. As winter approaches, what policies do you support to address this crisis?
Um, I mean, policies, I think, I think we need to have a big change. I don't know if the right policy is in place right now. You know, I do think as the homelessness population in Portland expands, that we've got to turn, we've got to turn to the state of Maine. This is also dealing with their own set of troubles in these days. But it's, it's not just a Portland problem, right? A lot of communities see Portland as the solution to their unhoused citizens. And that's not fair or sustainable for Portland over the long term. So, you know, in terms of policies, I do think it's really important to have a place where people can go and be safe and be warm and be fed and receive medical treatment as appropriate also. And so, I mean, there's a lot of actions. I, I don't have a policy idea quite yet.
And to you, Andrew. Thank you, Rose.
Yeah. So this one, I mean, this is every day as we watch the leaves fall and hit the ground, it becomes more and more pressing. And this has been very on the mind for everyone this summer, but it's not a new issue. I think, big picture, if I could implement a policy initiative day one, it would be enacting a Code Blue system. So a Code Blue system exists to prevent folks from being, unhoused folks from being outdoors in extreme temperatures. So we see that in a lot of northern New England cities. So, you know, that's, people are going out and they're making sure we're picking people up and we're getting them housed and warm, especially at nighttime. That is a Band-Aid solution, right? That's not solving the issue of homelessness and, and unhoused folks. That's a much bigger picture that has to do with addiction and recovery, opportunities and access to employment, which is very closely tied to, you know, the criminal justice system and banning the box. Folks who are incarcerated can't get employment a lot of the times, which is unfair and prohibitive access to education. I, I hear what Rose is saying and agree that this isn't, you know, Portland, alright, so Portland is the biggest city in the state. And inherently that means it has more responsibility because it has more resources. But Augusta can help us out, right? We do need more resources, but I don't think I agree to the mentality of, you know, we hear this all the time. It's either we're a destination for tourism and food and booming whatever, whatever, or helping the most vulnerable people. I think that you can be an ideal place to live and work and visit, and you can also take care of the most vulnerable people who live here.
Thank you, Andrew. Our next question will go to you first, Andrew, and Rose second. Do you think the city should move forward with building a new large homeless facility in Riverton as planned? If yes, why? If not, what policies or ideas do you support?
I was just having this conversation today with Homeless Voices for Justice. So big picture, I don't think that that was the best location. We saw a lot of NIMBY happening. And I don't think there was a lot of community conversation in a cohesive way that made sure everyone had a say, right? Specifically the people who are unhoused, because in that location, you know, we need to think about affordable housing and as a transportation issue. Issue and a couple, there's a lot down there, but I have, what, 90 seconds? So while I don't agree with that location, it was decided upon. And I fear that if we were to then, you know, a whole new council shows up and we decide to take a few steps back and, and go back to the drawing board, guess who we're not helping? The people who need these services the most. So at this point, I feel like that would do more harm than good. We need to move forward. We need to get this fully built out and outfitted and we need to be helping the people who need these services, right? It's not ideal. The ideal situation would be that we've officially eradicated the, the, the scar of homelessness and from our community. And everyone has upward mobility and dignity and the quality of life that they deserve. But, and I'm not going, meaning he's going on a tangent, but yeah, I, I feel like if we, if we backtracked, we would be not doing the work we committed to do. And we wouldn't be serving the people that we promised to take care of.
Thank you. To you, Rose?
Um, could, could you just repeat the question?
Yeah. Do you think the city of Portland should move forward with building a new large homeless facility in Riverton as planned? If yes, why? If not, what policy or ideas do you support?
Well, I mean, um, pre-COVID, yes. And I, you know, a large facility, I don't know. The, the idea with, I think we both had the opportunity to speak with Homeless Voices for Justice. And, you know, they have an idea that is different, that is a lot of small facilities throughout, throughout our community. And while I'm not 100% familiar with that, it does kind of make sense that, you know, that there is then a neighborhood element to a smaller facility where, you know, certain neighborhoods can take, you know, can embrace some of the responsibility for, for helping folks get back on their feet. A more radical idea that I've had since COVID-19 is with the proliferation of commercial development in Portland. You know, one of those projects is going to fail. Something that is in, in construction, something's going to fail. So instead of letting something, you know, an in process construction project sit vacant and wait for, you know, whatever auction or bankruptcy is going to happen, then why not repurpose something that's already in process and utilize that in a more, in a, in a downtown area? And give folks an opportunity to be close to services and all of the needs.
Thank you, Rose. The next question goes to you first, Rose. Andrew, next. What is your view of the role of the city manager and mayor? And please explain.
Well, um, I think the way the city charter is written and the inclusion of a mayor in Portland, the mayor wasn't given sufficient authority, like they, they have a lot of response, they have a lot of accountability without the authority to enact it. And it seems that the city manager has a lot of, a lot of control over what is happening with, with the city council, and that's kind of the seat of power. Now, in the municipal governments that I, that I work with, I mean, it's not, it's not out of the question. That's kind of the way it goes. But you know, to my understanding, the city manager is employed by the city council. I mean, that should be who he's responding to. You know, that, and the, and the electorate of Portland. So I think there needs to be a rebalancing of the power dynamic there and to have a little bit more collaborative process. You know, I think that, you know, anybody who became mayor during this time has, is facing a huge challenge. And it's not the job that they anticipated when they signed up for it. But I, and there seems to be, you know, so there is that need for collaboration. And let's figure out how folks can, how these two entities can work together in the interest of the better Portland.
Thank you, Rose. And to you, Andrew.
Yeah. So I think there's a couple of, couple of things going on here. The last charter in 2010 began this conversation about transitioning the, you know, the mayor that would switch every year to more of a figurehead that had what you would typically see in a mayor, right? And then, but it didn't seem to go all the way. So then what we have is a council or the elected officials that have the public administrator, the, the city manager. The city manager really holds a lot of the institutional control of the city. Personally, me, Andrew, not counselor, I believe that we should have our public administrators on tap, not on top. I think, I think of a public administrator as the COO of the city. And so their job is to make that thing run smoothly, make sure the roads are paved, which we really need to do. You know, make sure everything is running smoothly. And then policy and governance is up to the council and the mayor. It feels like, and this is in the height of this summer, we saw the vote on this charter commission. Folks are ready to finish what was started a decade ago. That's yet to be seen. Obviously, we now know that won't be until June when the charter commission begins. But I think that you can have a public administrator that's really good at their, their task, they're specialized, they're a professional in, in public administration. But you have a council and a mayor who are elected, you can hold them accountable. We currently can't hold our city manager accountable and that's a problem for folks. They're having a really hard time with it. Perfect timing.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Our next question goes to you first, Andrew, and Rose next. Do you think the Charter Commission should make any Do you think the Charter Commission should make any significant changes? If so, what specifically?
The second time I did that, I did not mean to do that. Right, so that's not up to me. That's up to the elected commissioners and the three appointed commissioners. I kind of showed you my cards just then, and what I think is the direction we're going in, and that's just by talking to people. And I, I'm sure Rose had, has had similar encounters. I feel like a lot of people are hearing this because it's, it was one of the most talked about issues for us this summer as a city. And it's a big deal. We should take it really seriously. We are, we are reconstructing the dynamic and the structure of our city government. So, that's going to be really interesting and kind of cool to be a part of, but we need to take it seriously. So, that's why folks who are running to be commissioners need to, you know, understand that they're showing up for a two-year project here. But it appears to me that that's the direction we're going in of more of a public administrator and then a mayor and a council overseeing governance and policy. And, and I think I would like to see that. I think that, that Portland is, you know, again, the biggest city in the state. And you tend to see that sort of, that form of government, you know, in a, you know, that situation, the largest city in a state. And yeah, it just, it, it feels like we are ready to be holding folks accountable as our elected officials and
15 seconds.
And, you know, if, if it doesn't go the way the constituents want, well, then, you know, that's what voting is about. That's what the polls are for, so. It's my two cents.
Thank you. And to you, Rose.
And I, I think that we're very, we're very much in agreement on this matter because there's not, not terribly much I can add to that. But as I was saying with the previous question, at, you know, the accountability and the responsibility have to be in the same, have to be in the same house. But in order for, in order for the mayor and the city council to function well, there needs to be a reorganization of that power structure that exists in the city right now. So, you know, to get to, to change the orientation of the council and the mayor to the entire operation of the city should be, you know, the first priority of the Charter Commission. And we hope that that is where it goes.
Thank you. We are now into our bonus questions, two bonus questions for which you will have 60 seconds to answer. Andrew, the first question goes to you, Rose second. What is a favorite book, film, or TV show? And tell us a little bit about it and why it's meaningful to you.
I'll give you like five, but I'm not. Okay, so, okay, I'm gonna give you a book and a TV show. Trevor Noah's book, I just recommend reading it. It's, it's just like a really good read. And it, it's funny and we need lighthearted right now, but it's also serious. Talks about his mom a lot. For a TV show, Schitt's Creek. I was a very early adopter and we were watching, we were watching it online on Pop TV, like Canadian television, and then thankfully it caught on. But that show is honestly what's going to get me through 2020, just like re-watching it 300 times. So, I think I'm like a David and a Moira together. So, yeah. Thank you for that question. These are the questions people wanted to hear.
Thank you. And to you, Rose.
Just because a good one, for sure. And of course, you know, of course, I like, I like the name of the store. I have a sweatshirt. Rose Apothecary. But I, I heard you ask this question earlier, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna choose Shawshank. It's, it's a main staple. And it truly is one of my favorite movies. I don't have a single favorite movie or favorite TV. I'm, I'm very much for re-watching and rereading. But Shawshank, I think, is, you know, persistence pays off, that, you know, justice, justice comes in, in many different forms. And when justice was served in that movie, you know, it was at, at the will of the individual who had experienced injustice. So, I mean, there's a lot more good about that, but that's as much as I can say in a minute.
Great. Thank you, Rose. And the next question will go to you first, Rose, and then to you, Andrew. What is a favorite place to take a walk or go in and around Portland? Tell us a little bit about it and why it's meaningful to you.
Well, if you follow me on Facebook, you will see more mornings than not. I start my day with a walk on Back Cove. And I often count my number of steps and take pictures of what catches my eye that day, and it's never the same walk twice. It's sadly something that's kind of fallen by the wayside during this campaign period because we're so busy. But that, that's gotta be my favorite place to walk around Back Cove. And I'll be honest, I go, I go, I say, I walk the three sides. So, I go from my house, which is kind of closer to the 295, and I go, no, a mile and a half in that direction. And I come back a mile and a half, and that's my morning walk.
Thank you. And to you, Andrew.
Rose, how many times have we passed each other on Back Cove? Seriously? Because I was gonna say Back Cove too. It's, you know, like, how could we not?
Depends on what time you go, I guess. Sorry.
It depends on the day, actually. Yeah, I mean, I will say Back Cove because I live right here and it's so special. And I just want to like hug it and take care of it. But yeah, that's a separate question. But I, so that I can give some, something else, I would say probably the walk around Jewel Falls is just like really precious. And you wouldn't think you had a waterfall in Portland, Maine, but we do, and it's great.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to the rest of the regular questions, 90 seconds each. Andrew first, Rose second. What specific policies would you support that address the lack of affordable housing?
So, this one is huge, and I feel like I said that a lot, like, this one really is big. And we're talking about this and we'll be voting on this, this November with the six referenda that are coming up. So, this is one of the conversations. I think, big picture, we're looking at how we talk about affordable housing. We're not going to build our way out of affordable housing. That's not how it works. We need to think about affordable housing in a couple of different ways, through a lens of equity, through a lens of sustainability, and also like looking down the road more than five years from now. Affordable housing is a transportation issue. I think I said that a little earlier, so I'm sorry if I'm being repetitive, but it's that, I guess it's that important, right? We need to think about access to public transit that is efficient, sustainable, and inclusive for everyone to, you know, have access to it. We need to think about the way the median income is defined for affordable housing. So, right now, it's Greater Portland and includes Falmouth, Scarborough, Cape Elizabeth. It's like $74,000 or something, which is not reflective of the people who live here. So, we need to redefine what that median income is. When we look at affordable housing, we're actually looking at what is affordable for people. I have it written down somewhere, but something like, I don't think, I don't think there's any district in the whole country where anyone who works 40 hours a week at minimum wage can afford affordable housing. And that's, that's problematic, right? So, redefining that, looking at transportation, and then just promoting inclusionary zoning, like we've already sort of started. And also accessory dwelling units. Okay, sorry, I ran out of time.
Thank you, Andrew. And to you, Rose.
So, I mean, we need affordable housing for all Portlanders, for sure. Affordable housing is an essential, right? And we need to work together to make sure that all people can live safely and affordably. And that has, it has moved so far out of, out of reach for some people. And, you know, when I think about it, I think about home ownership. But I think, you know, that's, that's kind of a pie in the sky desire at this point for many people who are, you know, in their twenties and thirties. You know, so I think that we have to look at real tangible things that we can, that we can approach, with which we can approach this problem. Like, for example, if we were to take a look at the Housing Trust Fund in the city and, which is used to support affordable housing, and take, take a look at that and see if we're using it effectively and appropriately. You know, I will say for myself, you know, in, in sort of the middle of my life so far, I fell in a little bit of, I fell in a little bit of hard times. And there was a point in time when I thought, you know, I'm never going to get to own a house. And one day I was walking by the play, I'm driving by the place where I currently live, and there was an, there was an income ceiling to purchase the property that I live in. So, I had to earn below a certain amount of money in order to be able to buy it. And I was grateful to take care of that or take advantage of that opportunity. And so, you know, innovative and creative ideas that sort of limit on the front and the backside of the purchase.
Thank you, Rose.
Thanks.
Thank you. The next question goes to you first, Rose, and then Andrew. Do you think the city should do more to combat climate change? If yes, what specifically do you think it should do?
Well, I think that, of course, everybody, everybody should do what they can to combat climate change. You know, unfortunately, we're on the receiving end of a lot of the bad effects of climate change just by nature of where we are geographically in this nation. You know, to the, going back, you know, decades, I'll be showing my age to the, to the sort of ages of the Clean Water and Clean Air Act, you know, through, that began with Senator Muskie back in the seventies. And that we're dealing, you know, we're dealing with the effects of that, you know, in terms of climate change and what we risk as a coastal community. Absolutely, we need to be doing whatever we can. But again, you know, as, as a small state in the nation, you know, we, we do have to play along. We don't really, you know, I don't know. I guess I don't want to say that we can't change because as Maine goes, so goes the nation. So, we should be, you know, we should be demonstrating, you know, best practices in taking care of our, in taking care of our climate, in taking care of our environment, and really mitigating and eliminating, you know, whatever we can in terms of greenhouse gases and air pollution, that sort of thing. I'm just talking.
Great, thank you, Rose. And to you, Andrew.
Okay, I'm gonna try not to talk too fast. So, really big and huge issue for me, like, one of the top three reasons why I'm running as a millennial. This is something that I'm, I'm just gonna be living with for the rest of my life. And we used to talk about, oh, in 20 years, we're gonna deal with, it's, it's out our window, but we're looking at it right now, and it's terrifying. So, one big thing is we just released the One Climate Future between Portland and South Portland. It's a great plan. It's beautiful. How are we going to implement it? So, Maine Conservation has like, they've been having meetings and conversations about how we are going to hold elected officials accountable. Here are some ideas that I have. We need to fully fund our Sustainability Department with the City of Portland. So, right now, there's one full-time person and then a part-time person whose job was cut because of COVID. That department should be arguably the biggest department in city government that interacts and intertwines between every other department in the city. That, we, we need to think about a greener future and act on it right now, and that's one way to allocate resources through a budget. We need to ban plastic. So, as a small business owner that has a lot of takeout right now because of COVID, compost, 10 years ago, compostable alternatives were more expensive. That's not the case anymore. You can have compostable coffee cups, compostable whatever you want. It's less expensive and it's compostable. So, we should ban plastic. It's pretty easy. Municipal composting. There's no reason a city this progressive can't have municipal composting. Trash Day, Recycling Day, Municipal Composting Day. Public transportation, Rose said that. I feel like it bears repeating. We need robust, sustainable public transportation and stop relying on so many cars.
Thank you. Back to you, Andrew first, and Rose second. What specifically do you think the city of Portland should do to better address racism?
I think step one is acknowledge that it's inherently racist and it needs to be anti-racist. I mean, the thing about systemic racism is that it's, it's in there, right? Especially as white people, we have a hard time seeing it. Maine is the whitest state in the country. Maine is the whitest state in the country. That, it, that's a big deal. So, it doesn't mean that we have a, a pass. It means we have to work that much harder. I already talked about it and dealt with it on some level with the, the city council voting to ban facial recognition because it's racist technology that can be used to oppress people. I think we need to make it mandatory, the city council should make it mandatory, that any elected official or city employee has to go through annual or biannual training, anti, anti-racist and anti-discrimination training to continue their education and their journey so that they understand what their privileges are or what their minorities are. And as a gay person, I know it's a little different, but and dealt with discrimination my entire life until I moved to Portland, Maine, and now I can count on it once a week. This city does itself a disservice by saying how progressive it is because you're putting yourself in a bubble and you're giving yourself tunnel vision. In order for us to do the work, we need to confront it. And it's not going to be easy, but we won't puff up, we won't shrink down, we're gonna stand our sacred ground, and we're going to take care of this once and for all as a community.
Thank you, Andrew. And to you, Rose.
It's a really hard question, and I, I, I hate to heap anything on our schools because our schools do so much. But, you know, I remember when, when my kids were coming up through, you know, through the Portland Public Schools. You know, they went to Riverton King and Portland High School. I remember, you know, at middle school, the kids, they were, they had a really good solution. You know, they would hear a racist or an off-color comment and, and their, their reaction to anything along those lines was, hey, we don't do that here. And, and then when they, when my kids were in, in high school, I remember, I remember them talking about, you know, basically what looked like segregation in the lunchroom. And that, I mean, it's concerning. And, you know, I, so I, you know, it's, we've got to, we've got to get this early in life. You know, I am grateful that, you know, for myself, I had exposure to wide diversity as a child and growing up in my life. You know, I am proud to say, Andrew, I married the first female couple in the state of Maine. I officiated their wedding. Thank you. And, you know, we got it, we gotta teach it young, and we gotta, we gotta make sure it gets, it gets to the home. Because if there's one thing, you know, kids who, who aren't born with it, they learn it and they learning in schools. Thanks.
Thank you. This is our last question. Rose first and Andrew second. What are your thoughts about policing and resources in Portland?
Oh, jeepers. Well, policing, I mean, I do think that we have a decent police force. I think, you know, in, as in any employer, any organization, there are always a couple of bad apples in the, in the bunch. And I think Portland is no different. You know, what I, what I know is that the equipment, the hardware and the vehicles and that sort of thing that Portland is currently in possession of, we don't need all of that. You know, I actually had a, had a conversation, you know, with a local educator today. And, you know, she, she talks about re-imaging the police. You know, I was talking earlier about demilitarizing the police, but I like re-imaging better. You know, I would love to see in our city putting a lot more emphasis and focus on dealing with those not-police problems that police become involved with. Do something maybe similar to, there's an experimental practice happening in Denver right now where many police officer calls are being responded to by a mental health worker and an EMT. And just those two, no police officer. And it's being very effective in sort of dealing with many of the problems where, you know, where the natural idea is, let's call the police. And, you know, it's often not police business that they're being called to.
Thank you, Rose. And to you, Andrew.
Yeah, so, very passionate about this one, and it's, yeah, I should just dive in. When we talk about, when people say defund the police, immediately your shoulders go up, you get really defensive. We should really be thinking about it in the lens of reallocating resources towards communities. And Rose did talk to that to an extent. We do it all the time in communities like Back Cove, right? It's, it's not that radical of an idea. It's just the lens in which we look at it. We do need to be reallocating resources. So, parks and rectums lost jobs, public works lost jobs, sustainable departments, sustainability lost jobs. Portland Police did not cut their budget. And I think that was really tone deaf, especially with what we saw this summer. I think that was an opportunity to meet people where they're at and listen to them, and we didn't, and that's not okay. I think that as we look forward, we need to look at, all right, what does the criminal justice system look like? We're talking about not just police, prosecutors. We're talking about parole and bail and how that system works. We're talking about judges, and we can reallocate those services to And we can reallocate those services to crisis management and de-escalation officers. We can reallocate those services to our schools that are in such desperate need right now. We can talk about what we can do to increase recovery, addiction and recovery services programs. All of these things are so interconnected. None of this exists in a silo. But I think we need to get all right, and this is back to your other question about dismantling racism, we need to be okay about having this conversation, reallocating resources from the police department and know that our community will be better off in the long run.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you both for all of your responses. We now have, you will each have two minutes for closing remarks. Andrew, you will go first and Rose second. Whatever you would like to say.
This one's always the hardest one for me. I can answer a question, but when you ask me to talk about myself, I have a harder time. I think for me, I've learned a lot over the past few months. I pulled my papers for running for office on like July 17th or something. And yeah, this isn't an ideal time. To be completely honest with everyone, this is not an ideal time to be running for office. But I think that we need to be seeking elected officials who don't think to themselves, gee, I was born to do this. I think we need to be looking at the people who live and work in our communities, who do the work every day, who know what it's like to key into their shops, not knowing what tomorrow's gonna bring, who, you know, work at the local elementary school, dealing with everything under the sun right now. We, we need, we need folks who can show up and, and be compassionate and kind. And also see down the road, you know, we have a tall order in front of us between climate change, you know, COVID dismantling systemic racism. This, this is a lot. And a lot of the biggest piece of feedback I'm getting from people is, thanks for running, why are you doing this? Why are you doing this to yourself? And it's because it matters. We really need to look out for each other and our community is important. These voices are important, representation matters. We need to have people who look like us and sound like us and act like us as our elected officials so that we know that someone's looking out for us. And, you know, without getting too like feely and wishy-washy, I, I, and I agree with what Rose said at the beginning of this conversation, this is a civic obligation. It's our duty to represent and, and take turns serving and lifting the city up. And here's a call to any other millennials or Gen Z's out there, you need to run for something because I can't be the only one doing it. We have to do more than just show up at a protest. We need to do all types of activism, which means running for office. So that's how I'm gonna end this. Thank you.
Thank you. Rose?
So, I assure you all, I have a millennial advisory council, they're called my children. And, you know, I mean, I'm not, I'm not that old. My oldest child is 39 years old and I'm 55. So do the math. I wasn't that old when I became a parent. You know, I think that it, the next city councillor has to be a person who does have some familiarity of the history of Portland. And I, and I have that, you know, I have seen Portland go through several cycles of growth and then, and then despair, and then growth and despair, you know? I've lived that cycle a couple of times in my own life. I hope I'm done with the despair part. But I do think, you know, I am a person who has, I have existing relationships with people in Augusta. I am endorsed by our local representative, Ben Callings, and our local state senator, Ben Chipman. So I'm supported by the Bens. I'm also, you know, I have, I have close family and friend relationships with many business owners in the, in the place, in the city. You know, Fred Forsley of Shipyard Brewing Company is a dear friend and a supporter. And Steve DeMillo is a dear friend and supporter. And, you know, so I think that they would agree, you know, I'm not, I'm not a, I'm not a one, I'm not a one-minded person, I'm not a one-issue councillor. In fact, I really embrace the idea of having the opportunity to get input from as many people in the, in the area as I can when it comes to policy decisions and decisions that need to be made. You know, I just, I find, I feel that I have the experience and, and, you know, and I will be happy to pave the way for Andrew to serve in the next term.
Thanks for ending it like that.
Thank you both so very much. We appreciate you being here tonight. Sharing your responses. We will be closing now. Thank you again. We wish you the best on the campaign trail. And thank you, attendees and viewers. This video will be posted on our Facebook page and also sent out to our email list. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone. I really appreciate it. Stay safe and we'll see you around the neighborhood.
Thanks for having us. And remember to vote, everybody.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Rose.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Andrew.